There is no notification of any public forum. Can we go to the apologies please? And as you'll see from the papers, we have apologies from councillor Noon, councillor Staines and the mayor. I know the mayor is on public business. Move that they be received councillor Hawkins seconded, councillor McTavish. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no.
I think the mayor will be here later.
The mayor is coming later, he's at a meeting with Torrey Gorge or whatever it's called this week.
It does seem to be a problem because sound day. Is it?
Mine's on.
Yeah but it's just...
Yeah, mine's on, I just can't hear you.
Hello, hello.
Yes Peter.
Would you like my dialing?
No, no, I can't hear him, this is the problem.
You can't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Is that really a problem?
Is that all right? Is that all right? All right, I'll move that the agenda be confirmed as printed on the order paper, seconded by councillor Hawkins. Discussion, those in favour please say aye. Against no. That's agreed. So that takes us to the part A report about student behaviour and related issues. Ms McGill and Mr Blair, would you like to come up to the table? I have to say that I think this is quite heartening to see this and it's good to see the public attention that the matter has already received in the media because I think the news is certainly much better than it's been in the past. So Adrian Ross, would you like to make some comment about the different elements in the report before we go to questions?
Thank you, Mr Chair. The report really just, as you will be aware, summarises the joint approach that we've taken, thanks, this year. Roz is here to comment on anything to do with noise issues and Laura is here as well in terms of water and waste and transportation and she can comment on any questions relating to that. Other than that, happy to take any questions.
Well, I'll kick it off then if I may. One of the issues, and I guess Laura, would you like to come up because this is yours upfront? One of the issues that often creates a lot of attention is that in respect of litter and how the pickups are managed. I must say I was pleased when concerns were raised with me about how that was being done and I wonder if you can add to the report in terms of the methodology that was used for the extra pickups, for the general oversight, for the education of the new cohort about what was expected of them and so on.
Absolutely. Certainly this year we took a slightly different view and we basically came from the approach of we want to keep the streets completely clean, so it wasn't an addition to additional services, it was basically working back the other way. In practice, what that meant is that we had people on the grounds at various stages through the day, so we had all of our normal services on. We had extra pickups but we also had roving crews that were going around twice a day just picking up anything that was where it shouldn't have been. So that was going through of an evening in particular, picking up any black bags that were out regardless of whether they were council bags or other rubbish. We also had street cleaning crews both doing additional normal street cleans but one of the problems we have is parked cars and getting in behind parked cars, so we had a roving hand crew literally going through and sweeping those things up. We had staff and campus watch at various points, checking how things were, checking with the contractors, getting people where they needed to be, but also door knocking, talking to students, asking them to bring their bins back in onto their properties if they were out when they shouldn't have been, in some cases doing that for them. And we also had a really good response from the private collection contractors, so we were talking to them when we could see that they had people with bins out on the wrong days and they were sending people out to pick them up, so it was really a blitz approach. We're also talking with the university at the moment who are keen to look at an improved level of service for the rest of the year that they would be prepared to pay for, so we're just looking at some options with them for both additional collections and street cleaning to see if there's something that they would be comfortable to fund.
That sounds good. Can I just follow that up in respect of glass? One of the issues that's been raised with me is the volume of glass, say in a flat where there might be six tenants and a complex that might have six or more flats. The clear implication is that if those people responsibly empty bottles, that the volume, given the numbers of people involved, is far beyond the capacity of a fortnightly blue container. Are you looking at that issue in terms of better management or more frequent management of glass recycling?
Yes, certainly they can each have up to three bins for their glass but still for some larger flats that's limited and certainly if there's multi-tenanted properties, that can be a problem. The way we're structuring the discussion with the university is about sort of three different possible choices. The first and the primary one is about bringing that glass collection to a weekly collection and we're also, although we haven't progressed particularly far with the second bit yet, looking at whether there are better options for the size, the type of bin bucket, whatever you want to call it, for the glass to go in so that it's harder to get out once you've put it in there, that would deal with those capacity issues. But certainly the first part of the conversation with the university is focused on bringing that glass collection weekly.
Well, I think you should be congratulated on what you've achieved so far, it's great and so long may it continue and be further improved. Councillor Wilson.
Is it too early to say whether that actually minimises the litter that was generated or it was just a tidy streets?
I think it's a wee bit difficult to say. One of the things that we have thought about already for next year is actually taking photographs through the day because literally we were finding the street would be clean when we left at seven o'clock in the morning and in some cases looked a mess again by two o'clock that same day. So getting that time sequence of photographs to be able to see how quickly some streets were deteriorating. Certainly, I think it would be difficult to imagine that you didn't get some benefit from, well it looks tidy so I'm not going to be the first one to throw something, but it was a battle through that, particularly that peak week or fortnight and we got very few complaints but sometimes even when we'd pretty much just been through, you'd start to see problems again.
The other question I had is, and it was interesting, you just mentioned the possibility of looking at other containers for glass for the larger places. Now, when we had the debate a number of years ago about rubbish and how it was going to look, there was a discussion that black bags could be in a container in order to stop the cat problem and especially in the university area where there have been issues with wild or feral, depending on what you want to call them, cats getting into bags. Is there any thought that that may be a possibility, that we can actually encourage wheelie bins for black bags as opposed to recycling?
It's not something that's featured in the conversations I've had lately, so I'd be not really in a position to comment.
Okay, thank you. Can I just also reiterate, not only thanks to the staff and Kath Irvine, especially with her group, but also the private contractors that came in and did some of the work, from what I'm understanding, fabulous job, sorry, to keep this place tidy and the fact that it was a joint arrangement is fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Colville.
Two wee questions. One of them about glass and I think that what you're doing is fabulous and very helpful about the glass. I'm thinking now of the number of people who aren't residents in the places that have the blue bins who are wandering along the streets because a lot of the glass turns up as a result of socialising by people who don't automatically have a blue bin sitting there that they might drop it in even if they had the nous to do so. And I'm wondering about whether there's any chance that we could have more, at least for the crucial fortnight a couple of times a year, public bottle bins just during that time in particular. So it's like when you're looking to put money in a parking place, every five cars or something is a parking place, you know. So I'm just wondering whether that's an option that we've...
So while I say we're looking at different options, that does include off-property options as well, so bottle banks, the university do have a number of those already, so we're having some discussions with them. We've also had some discussions about whether or not we deploy more of the event recycling type things during this particular period. One of the downsides and what we're very conscious of in this particular area and particularly echoed by some of the comments from senior university people is that the risk is, what you end up with is a pile of missiles on the street waiting to be thrown. So we have got to be careful that if we have things in public places, that's why I say we need to make sure that it's something that, once the glass is in, it's not easy to take it back out again, so that we're not leaving temptation for people who might want to do silly things with it. But certainly when we talk about looking at the options, we're looking at right the way across that scope as to given who is using glass, where they're using it, when they're using it, what's the best combination.
Sort of a lobster pot.
Yes.
A big lobster pot. The other question is back for Adrian and his team. Just, I notice this report is entitled 'Student Behaviour and Other Related Issues'. I'm wondering whether it is, could be more aptly described, and you would know better than we would, to be behaviour during orientation and other issues in that we have, it seems from the police's feedback and things, every reason to believe that these aren't just students and sort of describing the behaviour as if it's student behaviour as opposed to that orientation seems to collect every 18 to 25-year-old, you know, within 150k during that time. I'm just sort of...
Thank you, I think that's a really good point. The strategies in here were targeting orientation and university students, but I'd certainly take a point that a large number of the issues were involving people that were not students, so we could certainly look at that in the future, titling such reports, you know, 'behaviour during orientation'.
It's just that the reports become public and they look like we think it's a student thing and it isn't a student thing. It's all of our young people for miles around, so...
Just on that, it was heartening to see the police identifying the issues related to more than 60% of such being out-of-town, non-student population. Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Around the issues, and it's heartening to see that there are conversations happening around the increased level of service and waste collection and recycling, to what degree are these being explored as interim measures? I'm aware that the citywide contracts for recycling and waste collection are up for renewal in the next couple of years and I'm assuming that there is thinking going on about what that might look like citywide. So any of these conversations, are they being approached as a testing ground for alternative models?
Certainly we're mindful that if we were to enter into a different level of service for the university area, we would need to work out how that dovetails into those collections. But I think in terms of it being a pure test ground for the rest of the city, fundamentally this particular area does have some issues and challenges that are unique to the university, particularly in terms of the types of waste and the frequency with which it needs to be removed. So yeah, in terms of it being, we would look to do this for the university and then roll it out, it's probably more the other way around, that we would end up with a suite of services for the city with a top-up for this particular area to meet the particular demands of that area. As I say, that is something that the university is keen to put some funding into. So some of it is also helping them to look at options, so one of the things they've asked us for some support with is identifying the cost of one of the street, the little person pushing a street cart machines, with a view potentially of the university investing in that themselves.
Okay, I guess I was thinking more strategically in terms of how we might be approaching waste minimisation, particularly given the impact any review of the ETS will have on council from a landfill management perspective. I mean, it's one thing and it's great that we are collecting all of the trash that is being created, but it's equally as productive for us to be thinking about how we can reduce that quantum.
Yep.
So I'm just checking to make sure that that is part of this conversation also.
So that wider conversation is really more the conversation that leads into the renewal of those contracts and whatever service change happens then? So this is not really, that particular conversation is not happening strongly for the university because they're really looking for something in the short term?
Okay.
The two will then come back together again when we have the larger conversation for those contracts?
That's good, thank you. And just on the noise complaints issue, we know where the noisy addresses are, that's what this information is, but what do we know about where the complaints are coming from for the noisy addresses? Is it coming from within those same neighbourhoods or what? Do we collect that kind of information?
We only receive complaints that are in close proximity because if you're complaining from another part of the city, then we can't consider that as you're not being affected by the noise. So we would receive a complaint from a neighbour, that's where we're getting the complaints from.
So it's possible that the increased level of complaints coming from the North Dunedin area is indicative of a decreased level of tolerance from within that neighbourhood for that kind of behaviour?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Following up on councillor Hawkins' question about noise complaints, were you able to track if there was many from the motel sector along George Street, Great King Street and Cumberland Street?
We do get complaints from a couple of motels but it would be only a small handful.
Okay. And do you think they, because looking at the noise recordings and complaints, I'm pretty much like councillor Hawkins in thinking that people are getting more direct in complaining about the noise issues, so a motel may, for example, complain 20 nights out of 30. Would you have those sort of statistics?
We could have a look at the records of a particular motel that generally complains and we could look at the number of complaints they've made. We could do that to find out if they were complaining on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
Has there any discussion taken place with the university, with the campus watch and the police about increased camera surveillance and those sort of issues?
We haven't had any direct conversations with campus watch or the university about CCTV coverage, although I understand that they are looking at that and there may well be an invitation to council representatives at some point in the future, but I'm really not sure what the details are.
Okay, I'm just thinking as a gig city, we could have a great wireless connectivity with wireless cameras in the known hotspots through the O Week, that type of thing, and easily watching and assisting the police and the campus watch and the university?
Yes, that's certainly something that would be possible, but I feel is a question or an issue for the university.
Okay. I think when you look at the Hyde Street party and those sort of events, did you see any other issues around that event after the event? So the event finished, anything along those lines?
The evening of the Hyde Street party, which was on a Saturday, a Saturday evening, I think there were some issues, some behavioural issues later that evening in Hyde Street in relation to disorder and one or two fires.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Lord.
Thank you. I've just had two questions. One of them is for you Roz, you made the comment that the university has had some interest in perhaps picking up part of the tab for extra cleaning. I just have been very, like I've spent a bit of time in the North End, I've been pretty happy with what I saw over the O Week period, but I have just noticed just the last week or so, or the last couple of weeks, it's probably got a bit worse again. And I'm just wondering, do you think we should be ramping it up a bit further, just a continued increase for that whole area overall? And do we have the budget for that?
So in terms of the overall, if we want to keep the area in the state that I get the sense that the council is keen to achieve, then one way or another, yes, we are going to need to put some additional service into that area. We haven't budgeted for that at the moment, so at the moment where we're at is looking at what the costs of those different levels of service might be, having a conversation with the university about what service level they are looking for and what they're prepared to pay for, which may or may not then lead to a conversation back at this table as to whether or not the council wants to support a high level of service and if so, whether they would be prepared to fund that and if so, how. So at the moment, it's really just exploring the costs with a view to the university picking that up. Certainly in terms of the amount of resource we had of people out there, door knocking and so on and so forth, that pretty much took up the whole of the solid waste team and two or three members of transport staff for two weeks. So we simply can't keep that level of intense engagement up. But that said, it was a new group of people coming in, they needed education to use the systems properly, so we think we've got the investment, but certainly to keep it that way, probably does need more than we're currently doing.
Yeah, it just does seem to have slipped back in, but that was all but... Now, if you may, my next question is prepped for Adrian, but I just, are you going to be here for the next meeting? I've got a question relating to complaints, so if I ring the hotline, the 474 4000 and I've got a complaint, whether it's about a pothole or a tree overgrown my property or anything like that, what's the normal procedure? I have rung things through before and they immediately tell me that they're emailing the contractor. Is there another record kept of those complaints, like does it go to the transportation or the other particular area where you might be making the complaint about?
Through the chair, it really depends on the department and the complaint. For some issues, there is a, the email or the contractor is notified directly, others it goes to the department, but yes, there will be a record of it.
So for example, if I was to complain about a pothole on my street, you'll send the email straight to the contractor that would be charged to fix that or to investigate it, but there wouldn't necessarily be anything else in council except that record there if I ever rang back about it?
To be honest, I'd need to check the detail of how it works, but we should have a record of, I mean, we will have a record of the complaint being forwarded either to the department or to the contractor.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councillor Hawkins. Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you. Picking up on one of councillor Wiley's points, you talk about figuring out the cost of what an increased level of service might look like, whether the university are prepared to pay for that and to what degree, and council paying for part of that. A third option or at least another option would be for the property owners slash residents in the area to contribute to that through some form of targeted rate or otherwise. Will that be explored as an option?
Yes, certainly when I was talking about potentially the council contributing, that would then raise a whole series of following questions as to whether or not it was a targeted rate, a general rate or some other mechanism.
Thanks. Have you looked, in terms of doing the door-to-door stuff, have you had any conversations with the university's volunteer office or with OUSA in terms of recruiting people who might be able to assist in doing that for you or with you?
Certainly we had a whole range of different people during the orientation week and I know we have regular conversations with campus watch. We did have a conversation, certainly myself and Kath Irvine had a conversation around potentially getting student volunteers, but I'm not sure where that conversation went to, to be honest.
And lastly, just a couple of things that are mentioned in the last paragraph of the letter cosigned by the OUSA president and the vice-chancellor, which mentions enhancing glass and rubbish collection, but a couple of other things mentioned here, one that's picked up in the report, reducing the availability and use of glass in the precinct, excuse me, and lastly, enhancing the general amenity of the North Dunedin area. What progress has been made, if any, on those two points, given that the last of them in particular is something that council would by necessity be actively involved in facilitating?
Through the chair, those last two points are in relation to the two GP, so I would respectfully forward that on to, I think, Simon.
And I would respectfully not participate.
If I could just comment through the chair, there has been initial discussions with, about looking at restricting glass, for example, for specials and look at a voluntary accord, for example, for off-licenses. And those discussions at the very early stage, that'd be something we'd be looking at in terms of restricting glass in that precinct. We've also considered things like bylaws, but that's probably the next stage, we would just look at some kind of voluntary accord around glass. And in terms of enhancing the general amenity, those are discussions as well that are underway, partly through the two GP but also through looking at what budgets you might have available to enhance that, the general amenity of the area, but we haven't really progressed those so far to date.
And those are options like capital works and so on, so rather than maintaining the status quo?
Yeah, that would be, when we had an initial discussion the other week, it was around what can we do that would enhance the general appearance, look and feel of the precinct?
Thank you.
You were saying before that you had ground crews sweeping the water tables and stuff and picking up the leaves. Years ago, they used to have a water truck and had a jetting unit on the front and he used to drive down the street and when he come to a row of cars, he'd turn his jetting unit on, he'd blow everything right past the cars and then pick them up and make it all clean, this one-man operation. It would be worth looking at something like that rather than you had to wash all your curb and channel as you went.
So the particular issue for the student area is broken glass in the curb, so we'd have to be rather cautious about pushing that out of the way, so that's one of the reasons that the hand, well, the grippy hand is used.
The jetting unit used to clean, used to clean all the rubbish out, it used to clean all the leaves out, it used to clean everything and we always had clean gutters because your sweeper trucks can't get behind the cars nowadays, so those pieces are all left. So maybe if we could look at something like that to actually clean them out.
So I guess I'd just make the distinction that my comments were with relation specifically to the student, the student area during orientation week as opposed to sort of general approaches to cleaning?
My question I think is either for Simon or Mr McKeerker and it relates to point 33, which refers to communication channels between stakeholders. I know that this was brought up at the debrief that had all the stakeholders around the table and I'm heartened to see that it's still on the agenda. I guess my question really is, is that work broad enough to capture kind of day-by-day feedback between the groups involved? Because the background to that is that I sense that part of the issue that we have during O Week is that the stakeholders are so busy doing on-the-ground stuff that there is no focus on ensuring that every stakeholder is aware of what every other stakeholder is doing and the information that each stakeholder has. So having a debrief a month and a half later is great, but it's probably not actually what's going to assist. So is that what is being looked at under that point?
Through the chair, that's correct. We did identify as part of a number of debriefs that communications could be a lot better. So we have talked about ways that we can formalise those for next time and that started already, so there's a lot more communication going on between ourselves and the university at a senior level just to start with. So it's not just around O Week on its own, there are a whole lot of other discussions that are going on so that media releases, for example, or initiatives that either party are looking at are discussed early on. And so certainly for the next orientation, there'll be a lot more formalised process around that communication and sharing of information.
And will that include information sharing with governance of each of the groups in the time? a timely way?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Thank you.
councillor Bezette?
Laura, there's a lot of emphasis being given to cleaning up the mess, so to speak, but how much time do we spend on looking at how we can mitigate that? For example, you're talking about glass, and there's probably during orientation week, there's probably nearly every day where they're down there at some stage or other cleaning up glass. Have they thought of banning glass or any other, you know, these methods of, so that we're not actually continually going over cleaning up, you know, after every street party?
I guess in terms of the glass, the voluntary accord that Simon was referring to is one of the mechanisms that we're looking at in terms of trying to keep the glass out in the first place, the risk being that that becomes replaced with plastic. But certainly, it's probably not quite in the vein that you're talking about, but this year we also had student welcome packs, so each flat had a welcome pack with when the collections were, what people needed to do to try and make sure that, yes, they've still generated the waste, which is slightly different, but for anybody who was of a mind to, we did try to make it as easy as possible to understand all of the different places that they could get rid of their rubbish, their recycling. The university laid on skip days, so we were doing a lot of different things to try and make sure that it didn't just end up on the pavement. But, yeah, that's maybe not quite what you're looking at, but in terms of getting rid of glass, that is really about the accord.
Look, I know there's no answer to it, or an easy answer to it, but it, once again, I mean, you're talking about the welcome pack or whatever they get. There's still no emphasis on students acting, and it's not all students, I accept that, but people acting responsibly and that message is not being put to them.
Well, sorry, let me intervene. I'm not sure we know that that message hasn't been put to them, so I think that's a question that needs to be asked of the tertiary management itself rather than our staff.
councillor Benvist?
Regarding noise item or paragraph 12, the increase in fine from $84 to $285, have you considered that at $285 you might end up keeping quite a bit of this equipment? And what sort of costs might be involved with that?
We are finding that we're keeping some of it, but certainly not all of it. Most of it is being reclaimed. Any that's not becomes council property after six months, and it can be auctioned off at that point and goes back into that budget. The cost of storing it, it doesn't cost us anything. We have it stored with Armageddon initially, and then we have a storage area within the council that we use.
Thank you. And regarding councillor Bezette's broken glass issue, question for Laura, have you looked at how much extra it costs to clean up glass as opposed to plastic or aluminium, taking into account injuries and the fact that broken glass is much, much harder to try and deal with than plastic or aluminium?
No, that's not a piece of work that we've done to date.
Is it something that you have a feel for without having to do a lot of work about? I mean, you have a lot of experience in picking up broken glass.
Yeah, to be honest, no, I would be giving a very off-the-cuff answer. I don't have a sense for how, it's obviously difficult, it's certainly dangerous, but I don't really have a sense for how much more, I couldn't make that comparison, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. Just picking up on the seizure issue, what is the protocol where equipment is seized that isn't owned by the people who are currently in possession of it? So say hypothetically, I hire a PA and it makes excessive noise and you confiscate it, and then I don't go and claim it, can the owner, the rightful owner of that equipment recover that without cost?
Through the chair, they can't recover that without cost, but they can recover it. So we do get the likes of a heritage shops in town, and generally, they will have, we've spoken to them directly about this problem, and they have an understanding that that cost must be paid, whether it's from the people that have offended or they recoup it from them as part of their rental.
All right, thank you. Don't appear to be any further questions, so I'll move with the recommendation on the report that we note these documents, seconded by councillor Hawkins. Any discussion? Thank you again for your work in this area, it's most successful. Those in favour, please say aye. Against, no. That's agreed. Are there, under item six, are there any items for notification for future agendas to the chair? There being none, I'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much.